All right. I will use the mic. Oh, good afternoon, everybody. It's six oh five. And so we'll go ahead and get started with our, uh, uh, we'll start with our city, uh, ACE Committee Town Hall meeting. So ACE is a program that we applied for 2020, 2021. Uh, we were blessed enough to get selected into it. And because it was during the pandemic, there was a lot of ups and downs with the program. It actually ultimately got translated into the Alabama League of Municipalities. And so now we're under the envelope of ACE, which is under Alabama League of Municipalities. So we have team leaders who are assigned to us. Our team leader, uh, currently, uh, we started with a team leader. We did an analysis report where they came into Aliceville. They did a lot of research. And then once they looked around, they did a report. What's their report called, Miss Pamela? What their report called you? Okay, what's their report called that they did?
Uh, the assessment, uh, Aliceville assessment.
So they did the Aliceville assessment where they had a team of people come, uh, from all across the state to give us some pointers on what we could improve. And then that's where our ACE process kind of stopped it because of the transition. So now we're restarting our ACE process. Started back in the spring of this year with a couple of meetings. And then now we're culminating with, with our town hall meeting, um, to bring up ideas from the people in the community to see what we can improve on, to see what they would like to see, et cetera, et cetera. So with that being said, the two team leaders that we have with us today here are Miss Pamela Tremel. She's with West Alabama, um, the West Alabama Regional Commission. Um, and she's the senior planner for the, for our area. And she's helped us on a lot of grant opportunities, uh, grants, um, and things that point us in the right direction. And we also have Mr. Ryan, who's her, one of our assistants, who's helping with, um, this process as well. So without further ado, I'm turning it over to Miss Pamela Tremel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much. Um, I appreciate the council members that are here tonight. And Commissioner Nolan, who is here from the Pickens County Commission. Um, and those of you who are here from the community and other organizations. I appreciate, um, Diniki being here tonight. She's actually the city's coordinator for the Alabama Communities of Excellence Project for Aliceville. Um, and, uh, all of you, uh, as a community, whether you're virtual or you're here present, um, have a voice in everything that we do. The other thing that the mayor, uh, kind of left off is, um, West Alabama Regional Commission wrote a grant from the Delta Regional Authority. And, uh, when I wrote the grant, wasn't quite sure what I was going to call the project. And I was fortunate to have Ryan come on staff and we called it Delta Thrives. The Delta Regional Authority is a federal organization that is responsible for the Delta areas and for the Alabama Black Belt and funding for projects that fall under the auspices of what they do. So we called our program Delta Thrives. You have a handout in front of you. And tonight what we're going to be doing is I'm not specifically going to touch based on every topic for ACE. But ACE threads through Delta Thrives in the same way that we have to develop a strategic plan, ideas from the community. We will have many, many more, uh, community meetings in the next two years, uh, about not only Delta Thrives, but, um, Alabama Communities of Excellence. We use the abbreviation ACE for Alabama Communities of Excellence. So what you'll hear out of our discussions is the word ACE. Um, from Delta Regional Authority, you're here Delta Thrives as our program. And again, uh, you have a handout that tells you what Delta Thrives is. We're working the three counties within W A R C, West Alabama Regional Commission's area. Three of our seven counties are D R A counties, Pickens, Hail, and Green. So we are working the Delta Thrives program through all three counties. I have to say that Pickens is just doing phenomenal. We've had, uh, multiple meetings with, um, cities and towns and the Pickens County Commission. We, uh, I think Aliceville and Carrollton would be my last, our last two for town hall meetings. And we've met with first responders and police officers. We've met with, um, getting ready to plan and announce a meeting with nonprofits and community agencies. Um, uh, and, um, meeting with, uh, Superintendent of Education and, uh, Sean McDaniel in charge of the Career Tech Center. So we can get an education viewpoint. But, um, this is a chance in Delta Thrives to build leadership, have leadership development, build capacity. One of the most important things is community engagement. Your elected officials should always be engaged with your community. Your community should always strive to be engaged with your elected officials. Even when you disagree about things, it's important to have discussions. So you can find solutions together. And today the priority may be one thing, but six months from now, that may be finished and you go to the next one. So the needs of the community start being set. So what Ryan has also given you tonight is, um, a copy of what the council has expressed. These are not in any one, two, three order. These are just ideas that the, uh, your city council has expressed as some of the priorities they see for Aliceville. We have not helped them set priorities yet. That won't happen until all the meetings have occurred and the council can have everything that we've gathered and sit down and make a decision and start prioritizing the priorities list onto what's important. When that is done, we'll have another town hall meeting to say, this is what the council has determined to be priorities and get the community's feedback. So my ground rules in a town hall meeting are always this. Um, though Ryan can tell you, I love to listen to stories and I love to tell stories. But we are here tonight to hear your positive energy of suggestions of things that should be on the priorities list for Aliceville. Um, the other ground rule is this is not a gripe session. Uh, setting priorities doesn't deal with griping. And the third thing is, um, I, I don't want you to say, uh, Miss Pamela, let me tell you the story about my water line in my yard. No, I, I don't, it's not that I don't want to hear it, but tonight we are here to be a community gathered on behalf of Aliceville and give positive insights to what views a community think should be priorities for, uh, the council to consider. In the Alabama Community, um, of Excellence Program, the same thing has to be established. And there was a strong assessment done. It's been done about a year and a half ago. Um, not a lot out of that report has changed. Um, the mayor can maybe put it on the, uh, Facebook page or the website so you can all read it. Or, um, if you want to contact, um, uh, Ryan or my, well, not Ryan. Ryan's leaving me Wednesday. But if you want to contact me or maybe Diniki, I'll make sure Diniki, if she doesn't still have her copy, that we have a copy that can be emailed to you if you'd like to read it. Um, cause I've read it over and over as we have met as a council, as I've met with the council, as they've come up with some priorities from their list. The other thing is, um, just to put this out there and then off the table, is most of the citizens in every community of Pickens County has mentioned the need, the priority need to reopen the hospital. And, uh, that's not going to be part of a discussion tonight. Uh, one town council can't solve that problem. But I, uh, Ryan gave you a flyer, um, for the fifteenth of August. There is going to be an up-to-date, uh, town, a county, town wi- county-wide town hall meeting is what you would call it. And an update is going to be given on the status of the hospital situation, Pickens County Medical Center situation. Share this information, give away this flyer to someone who may not know about it. Tell everybody, take it to church, talk to your friends, take it to your sororities, take it to your garden clubs, your tea club, whatever you're involved with, because we want as many people there as we can. It's at the service center, in the judicial building, so you know we can hold about seven hundred thousand people. Come, um, Terry Sewell, we're either be there a person or, uh, Dr. Teardra Owens will, her representative. Um, Kelly Wolf from, uh, Katie Britt's office, Mike Radev from Tommy Timberfield's office. Um, the, uh, Ron Bolton and Representative Ron Bolton and Senator Gerald Allen, who had a meeting of about just right at eight months ago, nine months ago. Uh, and they hit the ground running after, um, the community just, uh, bombarded them with their feelings and their perspective about the hospital. And they worked through the legislative session, they've made a lot of connections. Terry Sewell has some perspective about things regarding the hospital. Uh, the hospital authority has been invited, uh, so we hope they'll be there. Uh, a lot, the commission, uh, Pickens County Commission will be there. All the mayors will, um, be there, will have good representation so that everybody can be on the same page in terms of information. So you won't see the hospital on, uh, the priorities list. It is on, uh, the Pickens County Commission priorities list. But I also think that, um, when you come to this meeting, and it's important that you and your boys be there. Again, the ground rules will be the same as my ground rules. We're going to be nice and good listeners at this meeting. We know all the problems, the media is focused on all the issues, the deaths. We finally have gotten a handle on the ambulance situation and working on, um, its funding, permanent funding. But we now have ambulances that are serving, uh, Pickens County in full force. Um, we've got some ideas so that even if we can't open a complete hospital, we know what's needed. And that, uh, is an active ER. We need an active ER. And there's a starting point. So I have no say and no voice in this, but I will facilitate as much as I can at that meeting. Um, but you won't see it on your priority list and it's off-topic tonight, okay? We, I, I want you to think with your heart and your mind and your soul about Aliceville. Aliceville has tons of potential. So we're here tonight not to hear any more Pamela speaking, but to be here so you can say, this is what I think is important. And Ryan's taking notes, what he writes down, he'll transpose in a minute. Um, so that we can then give the council everything that we have. Um, I also have an obligation of due diligence to my grant, my grantor. Um, they will be here in office to sit down and see how we're doing with Delta Thrives. They've heard stories already about how Pickens County has just hit the ground running. And, um, they've heard stories about ACE, even though it's not a Delta program. They like to hear how communities are taking advantage of every resource that's available to them. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to open the floor up. And Ryan is going to, like I said, write down whatever you suggest to be a priority. There are no bad priorities, okay? Um, I like to have a lot of brains in the room. Um, and here, all you have to say, you have ideas, you experience Aliceville in a different way than I do. You live here, you raised family here, you work here, um, you go to church here. You're part of a Chamber of Commerce here, you're part of an I D B. Um, just every aspect. Jill's part of a community agency as well, the commissioner. And a community service agency knows the center of a community very well. Um, workforce development, things like that. So the floor is open and I'd like to hear what you have to say. Don't all speak at once.
Well, I got to ask a question, some concerns, thing?
Yes.
Uh, we talking about the hospital? And I want, what I want to ask you is an answer, like, uh, by being out there. And I know we've been here, here about the hospital, now two years, it's not going to close, it's not going to close. Have you heard, have you heard of a team site, anybody out there sat in this room, talked about opening up a hospital, uh, getting it back started, uh, provide answers, some kind of way of following?
I've heard future ideas. Um, I, since I'm Commissioner Rogers, since I mainly work as a facilitator at my agency, because we don't take sides, we support what's good for a community. And this is a very delicate, fragile topic. Um, I believe you're going to hear some good information on the fifteenth. Information you haven't heard before, work that's being done quietly. Um, how the congressional delegation are working on things. How the, how the legislators are working on things. Uh, some ideas even some of the mayors have. Um, I think you'll hear s- some of that answer to your question on that day.
Right, right, another part of the question. Uh, listening to all that you're telling us now, but hearing it, we've been hearing it for so long. Uh, could you, could you probably say that we would have a pretty good chance of getting our hospital back for the council?
I can't say.
Thanks, Ryan.
I would love to, but I can't say. But I respect the question.
Okay.
And I promise you, come to the fifteenth, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Come to the fifteenth.
Okay.
Good question, but come to the fifteenth.
Okay.
All right. We hear some things from you as a community. Yes. So when you say, um, so do you want it with the priority list that we already have? So is this in reference to the priority list we already have, or is this on your list? What, whatever we discuss as a town hall tonight will be added to that priority list. What we wanted you to see, and again, this is a, uh, a living document, what, what Ryan handed you. These are things that came out of two meetings with, uh, the commissioner, uh, the council members. And we'll add to it. And then the council will sit down after they have other information and put together a working one, two, three priority list. And from there, well, I'll just add this real quick, Commissioner, is the end result for every town and city and mission we've worked with is we will be working with ways that D R A wants to see them help fund your projects and ways other grand fours can help fund your projects. And also ways every city and county commission to make sure they're working on a reserve, okay? But that's a starter list. Nothing's in stone.
So you know, my biggest thing is workforce development.
Yes.
Is trying to put some workforce development to the program, especially how, um, we have, um, young men who haven't finished high school and gets, um, good work in the summertime. So I'm really big on trying to, trying to find ways like, um, um, like we have some of these industrials that's running, I know we have industrial park. And you have some of those, you have trucking companies, um, that have, um, this and, you know, buildings over there that maybe that could be used for a training center for young men that want to do truck driving, schoolwork. They want to take their parent to school. So I would like to find a way where you can do, offer some training, some training programs that they can take. You know, even, uh, even besides the, um, young men, it would be for adults. Because we have those and I work with, they come get out of jail and they can get their time. And sometimes it just be in the pen and stuff, if they still look at the backlash and you still, you still have a problem trying to get them training program. Or do the fatherhood programs work to try to get them trained into training facilities or, or different programs? So I would like to see some type of training program that would work with our second chances, um, individuals to where they can earn a training, um, like the prison does.
Right.
They do rehabilitation there. When hours get out of county, what do they have? They don't have anything. I, I saw a young man get out last week and he was trying to get that blue serum. And he was, so what is the offer? I mean, the P O wants them to get a job. They want them to be, uh, productive. But if they get out of jail and they're in this meth and no training that they can get, they are going to go right back to where they're stoned. So how do we fix that? And my thing is trying to get some type of workforce development, um, program here for our reentry, you know, reentry program.
You know that, okay. The second chance reentry program.
And then when you look at the library, we have the senior program here. And the library, we do a lot, you know, Councilwoman Ball and Allen and more, we do, and more than, we do a lot at the library. I, to me, that needs to be a little bigger. She has a computer room there. We, we do job fairs. We have like fifteen, twenty employees in that library. You'd be amazed how we fix them in there, but we, she put about twenty employees. We have, we have thirty, we have a million, we have thirty individuals. And I would like to see a, a more advanced senior center, you know, um, that's got a computer room for the seniors so that they can get some type of, um, educational computer classes besides just going to eat and going back home.
Doesn't, uh, Don can answer this question for me? Doesn't the Boys and, the Armory, the Boys and Girls Club have a room that they'll put together over there with computers and, and job stuff?
So, uh, yes, but their computers are connected to their servers. Uh, so they're limited on what they have. And the issue I think was transportation, getting seniors over to the area. And I'm sure Belba wouldn't mind doing a whatever there, but trying to get the seniors from, uh,
From the seniors, because they ride, they help.
Right, the help was dropping off with the food.
They'll drop them off.
Right.
And, and so, you know, but then you have the, um, then you have the career center that comes here on Wednesday. So there's a lot that goes on at the library as well. Um, the career center comes here on Wednesday, she does job fairs, she does, I mean, anything that, that you can put information and resources into the community. We really try to provide for school this way. So I would like to see a special, a special to the library and then a, a break to the senior center.
Got that, Mr. Ryan?
Yep.
And it's something for our kids to have in the summer. I know we can't do a water park, anything like that, but something.
Okay.
Well, it's just about, you know, well, let me take that back, it's just something to speak it, because it's, so I would like to see a water park, something that is going to bring funding into the, to the city.
Are you talking about, so you're talking about a water park?
A water park or something that, um, we have the, the little surface that comes here and I know that benefits the library. But I would like to have something here, we have the park. And that in my days, we played saltwater and these are things, and we have the park. Or something that you can add on down into the park and make the park more advertising. Uh, some kind of recreational, um, place down there for, for, um, the children, and, and that's to keep them out of trouble.
Sure.
You need more news?
Uh, so I can, I can, you know, I can scroll down a bit, so I think you have some thoughts this year, if anybody else. Well, there's your I D B chair right there. And I know he's been, they've been hawking and brainstorming too. Donnie, you have some things you want to say?
Well, one thing I would like to see, and we, I think, at least on the ground level, working for cleaning up the old cotton mill site, making that more attractive to some better use. We're using part of the parking lot down there now for trucks, and that's been a big help for them. But the remainder of the area is tied up in that dilapidated building. If we could get some funding to help clean that side up, that would be a great thing.
That wouldn't my chance fall under a brownfield site, would it?
I probably would.
Okay, we might have some funding for that, we'll talk about. When you have a brownfield grant, have you thought about that site?
That, that's the main site. They did, they're doing phase ones on that site now. And so, uh, that's just the, the study portion.
Right.
Then after your phase one is complete, then you go to phase two, which is cleaned up. So we got to finish out, we need some more people to help on the phase ones, so we spend the money. And then that way, go ahead and get to, to the phase two.
Okay. So what's part of the phase one, I mean, what's this?
So, so phase one, um, what are we talking about?
You can, you're right.
Uh, the long short of it is EPA has a flip side, which is the side that tries to get you to prevent things from being an issue. And so different businesses that are downtown, uh, or in the area, they can apply for these phase one brands. They'll test to see if you have any kind of, um, malicious stuff that's inside of your settlement, your walls, your bank, whatever case is. And then they'll pay for the study to be done. And once you get the study done, then the, on the second, on the back end, they'll do, uh, funding. So that way you can clean up that area. And then they'll give you a clean bill of certification. And after you get your clean bill, then you can show that this is a certified EPA, blah, 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 blah. So whoever buys it, I usually get that, get out, I don't know about, get that thing out.
The, uh, what's important, especially when something is in the industrial park or in an area where business can be promoted, is if the site needs clean. If it, uh, you know, businesses like to see that when they're moving into an area or, or purchase a piece of land or lease a building, that it's clean and mitigated of, with no hazard conditions and, uh, no radon, no, uh, secretly dumped trash, no. They do the complete environmentals and all the studies that are needed and required by EPA. Aliceville has a brownfield grant and West Alabama Regional Commission has one. Ours is for the, our entire seven counties. Um, we're looking for projects, mayors, uh, brownfield is for Aliceville. So, um, that's a start, Donnie. That's a start for the middle area. And we'll see what can be done to make that an accessible, uh, future potential site for business. Other things, Donnie?
Well, our port, which is outside of the city limits, but, you know, we could certainly use them to clean up on the twenty-five acres that the city owns there. And the same way in our industrial park. We've done some improvements recently, uh, down there, but there are still some opportunities there.
Um, Ryan has provided the council with, uh, a large version of, uh, the industrial park map that we, we cleaned up. We took out homes, we took out churches. It's, we concentrated the map on industrial park. Sites that individuals or, um, organizations owned that might be available for future business purchase. Sites that are already have businesses on them, um, buildings. purchase, sites that are already have businesses on them, um, buildings if there are any that are empty, what are buildings used for. We, we did a cleanup map and, uh, Ryan gave it to the, uh, sent it to the council, but the mayor asked for large copies of it. So, now the city has large copies of that. And, um, it is something that I'll be sharing with the ACE main committee, um, as well. But if, if you want it, Donnie, let me know for I D D. Can you share the members on that committee, who I was on there? The ACE committee? Mm-hmm. The ACE committee is Charles Wise, Daniki is, uh, in, uh, the coordinator, I'm the co-captain, um, the mayor, uh, Alan Jean, Strickland, Bobby Sanders, Bobby Ingram, uh, Charles Wise, uh, Matt Lavender, there's three males, I don't know who these are, uh, mayor, um, Kisha Trigg.
My Kisha Trigg.
Is she your parking rep person? No?
She's, uh, she's at.
Teacher?
Yeah, she's a teacher.
Okay. Uh, Norantar.
That was the S.T.A. president for Aliceville High School, but she graduated, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Maya from West, uh, Westall.
Yes, uh, I guess at my senior, from Boys and Girls. Is that it? West Alabama Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
That should be, that one.
B.G.C.W.E.S.T.A.L. That's probably West Boys, Girls, Club, West Alabama. Yes, okay. And we had not, we probably had about nine more, but the rule was after the last meeting, if you didn't respond to the mayor, I didn't attend, we cleared the committee and looking for new members, some more members.
You say, and Donnie's the other one?
Yeah, I said Donnie.
No, when you were at the meeting?
He was at the meeting.
Him and, uh.
We didn't clear, Donnie, Bobby Wise was at the meeting, Bobby Ingram, I mean, Charles Wise, Bobby Ingram.
Charlie Wilson.
Why am I calling them Wise? Charlie Wilson, Reverend.
Yes.
No. And he's on the committee. Um, Bobby Ingram was there that day, Donnie Sanders, um, Danny P. was in and out, but there were some others, we had others. Matt had talked to us by email, he was out of town that day. So, if you have any interest, let us know. I will get you to work. Um, we want the committee to be a well-represented, um, uh, group for the community. Now, the council members are always participants, okay? Uh, but, um, if anyone would like to be part of the committee, please let the mayor or I know. All right, other, um, suggestions? I'm just looking at this priority list. I know you said it was not in any particular order. What is this food access, limited options? What?
Right, so, right now, now still the only food option is the one grocery store. So, they mentioned trying to get, um, more involvement with that.
Okay. Now, I know you have Fresh that's opening now, but, uh, farmers, you know, how active is your farmer's market? What does it entail? Um, how participatory are the seniors with their, uh, Senior Choice Program to go over and use their vouchers in the summer? Do you have access enough to fresh fruits and vegetables, but also affordability? Um, that type of thing. Okay.
There's, there's a comment, I'm just gonna read it while everybody's thinking. Uh, somebody put down, transportation from Aliceville to Tuscaloosa.
Um, is that person still online? Ask them if it's medical transportation they're interested in, or is it transportation to like the airport or, uh, senior type transportation for grocery shopping, shopping, whatever you'd like to do in the bigger city. Ask a couple more specifics. The other thing I will throw at that person is it's also an entrepreneurial opportunity. Um, I watched Birmingham about twenty years ago needing a lot more medical transportation, especially in mental health and substance abuse, not just hospital appointments. And boy, the entrepreneurial opportunities people took advantage of and are doing still real well of, um, kind of long before we heard about Uber and Lyft, okay? Uh, those opportunities. Uh, it's again, sometimes, uh, one of our problems could be solved by somebody developing a business. So, somebody, uh, becomes an entrepreneur, has a job, serves a need. I'm all for things like, like that. Any other comments from online there? Um, councilmen, councilwomen, do you have any other ideas? Uh, Catherine? I haven't had a chance to interact with the chamber much, um, in my last five years, but I look forward now that I've met Catherine. Um, also, for those of you who have never participated in, uh, Leadership Higgins County, um, the next class in, um, I think October, we hope to have good representation from Aliceville as part of our ACE initiative. So, um, if you've never been part of Leadership Higgins County, council, men and women, uh, staff from the city, other churches, organizations, it's a good opportunity.
I got another question. But I might have went a bit, a bit, how it now makes, okay, that's a question. You like to buy the farm, uh, buy I.D. farm? Just go.
Yeah, we can put that, we can talk about it.
Talk about it, buy the farm. And we need, we need a fire station mayor, you know, we don't have just for here. Uh, we want, lost up a whole lot of equipment and, uh, our trucks and things. So, we need, uh, we've been getting, getting one, but we hadn't got it yet. Uh, it's raining town, so what, what would, how would that fall as far as improving of, uh, emergency services?
Um, there are grants out there for those things. Mayor and I have talked for about a year, maybe a year and a half, about a fire station. And, um, so, make sure it's on the list, Ryan. And, uh, it's really a topic we haven't put away. Uh, it's just other things have arisen. Um, you know, your water and your sewer has some stuff going on, you have a tap grant doing some more roadwork. But it's, um, it's been a viable topic of conversation. Um, and I think we even talked about going ahead and getting, uh, an architect, um, to design a building. Um, and give us a cost estimate.
A year, a year ago, it was letting off, how many years ago we did that? What?
Two years, I think it's two years.
Uh, it was one point, two million, two years ago? So, I would imagine that it's probably fifty million dollars now. So, uh, but, that's, you know, say, that's, we got, we got an architect out of Tuscaloosa, I think it was Ellis Architects that came and did a design for us, so. So, that kept telling, I think that what you had told us to get the estimate on, whatever.
Well, we are waiting to hear if some of your funding is going to come from Terry Sewell's office. And once that decision is made, then I can write the grant that will cover the rest. Terry Sewell's not going to give you, um, three million or four million dollars. She'll give, we're hoping, she's, she's going to give something. But, um, then the rest will come from grants. And, um, there are limited grants for fire stations, but there are good grants for fire stations. So, um, it's a topic, it'll be put on, I'm surprised we didn't already put it on the public list. But, um, and we've been discussing it. Once we know what Terry Sewell's going to do, then the rest can start being worked on. The other thing that has to happen is proper procurement of, um, architect or engineer and then contractor, things like that. Um, you're dealing with anything, federal money, state money, when it comes to making sure procurement is done correctly.
And another question, saying that, is that our reach there, we couldn't, like, um, illness, just something that, uh, you know, I don't have the illness there that we can do, they all, we have a lot of people here that can't get to the hospital. They, they like, they have, they have something, I mean, everybody's like a patient or something, you know, they can go to the hospital and check. We've got a lot of people here, Baptist or Catholic or U.S. C. And we don't have no help, bring them, uh, bring them to, uh, to the hospital, because we don't have a lot in the surrounding area. So, what are our chances of giving transportation here to, to deliver? Uh, then we have to go for a fund. I know, I know, most of the things happening in terms of here, a lot of them have a fund and they can't make them, they can't meet them. So, that's what I'm here to, every day.
Are they in a nursing home? I mean, are they bedridden by chance, or is it just they need an appointment to be taken to the point?
No, they aren't in that, they're not in a nursing home, they're all.
It's just medical. It's, it's an idea, an ambulance, one of the things we're learning after, for those of you that have might have sat through four months of the work that we did to get the N S services back up for Higgins County, um, is that we need to make sure that the ambulances are used for the things that they're going to get reimbursement for, from Medicaid, Medicare. And, um, so, to be used to take into an appointment is one thing for nursing home, dialysis. They do serve as a transportation for dialysis patients in nursing homes. Um, but developing some type of transportation that they can be taken to appointments, again, yeah. And there actually are, um, for entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs that would like to start businesses, Small Business Administration has some wonderful opportunities and training on how to run your own business. Um, and I've seen transportation being just prevalent on their list, what they fund to help somebody. We as an agency do micro loans, right, Ryan?
We do.
Uh, we have a micro loan program and a revolving loan program to help, uh, people get started on small businesses or expand small businesses. Um, but, do y'all have a rural transportation program that comes around to Aliceville?
Yeah, but it's limited in what it does. That's the, uh, that's the help.
Yep.
Uh, help, uh, yeah, help is anybody can, see, that's the thing, there's a, there's a stigma that if anybody can't, well, it's for senior citizens, but it's for everybody, because I thought it was just for senior citizens.
Is it for medical appointments too, isn't it?
It's for anybody, yeah. And medical appointments, doctors.
Tuscaloosa.
They go to Tuscaloosa now?
Yeah, they go to Tuscaloosa.
And that, that's what the commenter put back on what you said, I think she said, uh, the jobs they bring from the job fair are like out of town. And so, a lot of them try to get, can't get there because of the transportation issue, transportation, excuse me, issue. And they either lose their job or they get fired because they ain't going to work because they relied on Little Sue to take them. And Little Sue got a doctor's appointment, I'll sit, and she's, I ain't going to Tuscaloosa, and then they get points and then they get fired. So, I think the medical side is good, but also the jobs are, it's, the jobs are, are.
Transportation to jobs.
Yeah.
I, I think the health best though is, when I worked in home health, I had to set up a lot of appointments for patients. And if they have an advance, they're very accommodating.
Okay.
And that's, that's the key, is, um, planning and organizing. And that way, help can organize everyone who needs to use them on that particular day and get everybody to where, where they need to be on that day. That's a start, but I think, um, something that, um, maybe ACE can look at, um, with some of the nonprofits is, um, how one of their projects could be figuring out some, uh, transportation, uh, services that are beyond, uh, help in an ambulance. I mean, I just think it's, would be a great little business for someone. And only because I was working for the Department of Mental Health at the time in Birmingham where I saw this happen. And even if someone, uh, who was providing the transportation, they might have ten spots across east Birmingham, um, east Jefferson County and say, okay, at five o'clock, if you would like me, you know, if you're on this side of town, can you get to such and such, such mall at five o'clock and I'll pick you up and take you to your appointment and then pick you up and take you back? And so, because sometimes people who are running a service couldn't quite go as far as someone lived that had spots where you could pick up. There's all kinds of things they did to make it work. And it, it worked really well.
Was it basically Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement?
Um, there was, at the time it started, there wasn't even such a reimbursement. It was like five dollars for a ride. Um, and then Medicaid reimbursement came out. Um, and the mental health centers and doctors' offices trained those entrepreneurs how to do the paperwork. And, um, then other reimbursements came out, even community mental health centers helped out. But it was, uh, a job for someone, uh, even somebody who was on social security, didn't want to make a whole lot, but wanted to work, wanted to keep his social security, but still provide a service.
Now, I have had employees that were willing to sit down on the same schedule if they had for transportation. My goodness, I mean, you have a lot of people working here over in Tuscaloosa. You have those big employees.
Right.
You can at least provide transportation, see if you got so many on the ship, a seventy-three or three eleven ship or eleven seven. Or maybe give them transportation spicing to help them get back and forth, especially if they are dedicated, boy, you know that they are trying and things happen.
Well, and that's things that you can, that's a conversation with a chamber and I D D to businesses and, you know, however West Alabama can help to create a project for them. Listen, they need their employees.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a workforce shortage. And maybe they can collaborate, two or three businesses could collaborate, get two vans and we'll meet people here and, you know, the innovation that you come up with is, um, there's no limits. So, I really, one of the things I stress to you tonight, other than our list of priorities for Delta Thrice and for ACE, is ACE is going to have to come up with a nonprofit and create a nonprofit, create their own funding and, and carry off a project. So, this is a perfect opportunity, um, we'll put this on the list even for ACE. Um, transportation. Um, you know, ACE has a huge responsibility, uh, to, in creating Aliceville as a Alabama community of excellence and you have to think out of the box sometimes. One of the ways, a couple of years ago, that Mercedes decided to, uh, create job opportunities where they would, weren't getting filled, is, um, talking to people who, who would be willing to go to college, work while in college, their college be paid for by Mercedes. And when you graduated with a degree that would benefit Mercedes, you had to give them five years. And it's been a phenomenal program.
My nephew did that. My nephew did that.
My nephew did that. I have a number of friends whose grandchildren have done that. And it's been wonderful opportunity. And Mercedes has benefited. Um, not when you're, everything that I keep up with on workforce and growing a community, the words I hear all the time are resiliency, innovation. How many, uh, commissions has Governor I D, I D created that has the word innovation? Um, workforce has used that to create those universities. Uh, you have to be innovative. Do you think, uh, the makers of the, the wheel were innovative when they decided they needed to have something that made transportation, uh, whether it was dirt, rocks, or themselves, uh, when they created the wheel? Okay? There are a lot of programs out there that can be reconfigured to serve the needs of... Listen, I would never have sat here and said they would create a walker for the hind legs of a dog. And yet, those dogs have active lives now because they are getting such services. Not right. I would never have imagined it. But thank God, somebody did, because now you have people who love animals who needed that type of assistance, and those animals didn't have to be utilized. So, uh, anything is possible when you put, uh, people together, minds together. And I'm talking about even juniors and seniors and sophomores in high school. The creativity that comes from, uh, their, their STEM projects is out of this world. It's amazing to me. Um, so that's what Delta Thrice and ACE is all about, is your ideas, your thoughts for Aliceville. Okay? This is your community. While I work with the mayor and the council, I feel a part of the community, though I don't live here. Um, but, uh, Higgins County people can tell you I'm very invested in Higgins County. I don't, I now do live in Gordo, but, um, I'm invested in rural communities in Alabama.
I was thinking we pushed that, uh, transportation cop last week. It was a sad situation, but I was there. And, uh, I got a call, uh, to a house, I don't want to do names, but the situation where, as she was sitting there, she had a doctor's appointment. But people picked her up and delivered her to a doctor's appointment, and she didn't have no money. And they didn't show up, because she didn't have any money. And so now, um, and there's a lot of like, and some can get there, some can't, some just don't have the money. And you, and everybody is not going to hire you free, or not going to put time in it, but... They knew about the meeting today. I knew about the meeting today, so that's one of the questions I want to ask, since Commissioner Martin went to transportation. Uh, we need, yeah, because that's how we got here in Aliceville, Alabama, last week. But I gave them the money to tell them, well, they can go to that doctor's appointment, because she was hurt. You know, so.
And she got to the doctor?
She got to the doctor, but then, but then, because she didn't have any money at first. So this, and they were just a private loan person, you know, or no. Especially, I'm a service, and that, I didn't. It was just somebody up in chair, and they're like, you didn't have no money, you can forget it, because I'm not going to kill. Right?
You know, this is where, um, I, I think, um, Reverend Charles would agree with me. Christine and I had had a side conversation at our last ACE meeting. But, um, we put some responsibility on churches, okay? They have church vans, and, uh, find ways for them to expand their liability coverage and help, uh, talk to Sandra Walker in Greenham. She and her husband are from a church over there, and nonstop trying to figure out ways to do everything for everybody. Commissioner Ball, do you know her?
I, I know, but, but, uh, we basically do the same thing. Um, some, I have taken people to drug rehab programs, signed them in. I have, we have put people up in hotels, um, we have placed people in some of our rental houses. I have filled out paperwork until, uh, to get them, uh, apartment. Uh, I have done it all. I have done it all. I mean, if you, I mean, I have looked for furniture, and know some people that have furniture to, to furnish their whole house. So, I mean, I, we do it all. I mean, I, I'm just not a council. We do, we do, if you can name it, if you can think of it, we do this.
Well, you know, that's, um, the role of a community, is to be engaged and to be engaged with every other member of your community, um, for things like that. And, uh, I, we were sitting in the town hall meeting for Gordo, if I remember right, Ryan, and a number of church members from different churches said, yeah, we have a text group. Someone sends us a text, what we need to do, we're on it. And I said, I need all those text numbers. Uh, but they, you know, that's how. The sad thing, let me just say this, is who knows about it?
You see, that's where you need, to me, and, you know, like, when you come into different states, they have the little resource area, you know, center area. And I think we need something like, they did a resource book along and around, but I think you need a resource book that deals, the information that people don't know about, that really, really true that the rest of people don't know about. What church is going to listen to this? Besides, we have agents.
And our, you know, the other half of my, of the agency I work for is the area, West Alabama Area Agency, I'm agent. And I'm the Community Economic Development Department. And we have a, uh, you know, this is a mis, misnomer, it's called the Transportation Department, but we help communities plan transportation plans, um, more like your roads and your highways and interstate and things. And then we have a Department of G I S, where we do maps and data maps and things. So, you know, we put out a resource directory, but it is more seven county scale. You have to find a way to develop your community engagement, find out what's going on in your community, share resources, even if those resources are, uh, a handout to start with at the front desk where Renata sits at the window. Um, on the outside, if someone comes in and says, do you know where I can get help a friend? Here's a church list. You know, on this list is a number of churches. Do you know where I can get, possibly, some furniture? I just moved in here, I have nothing, starting a new job in Friday. Okay? You can start small, but even the churches have to be willing to say what you're willing, they're willing to do. In every organization, there's always a ton of alumni sorority people in every community. You have your Chamber of Commerce. Maybe this is an area where even the chamber can help drastically. A chamber is a resource. They are a resource of resources. Um, you have Indian Rivers up the road. Get resources from them, how they can help their clients face transportation issues, okay? Um, talk to Sheriff Powell. Um, talk to each of your police officers, uh, your chiefs. Uh, what can they do? Um, the willingness of a community has to be there. And there's a good book, but if you have never put your hands on it, and I guarantee you probably haven't, it's called Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And it's by Doug Griffin. Go online, look at the situation, read about him, get his book. And it's, it is looking at communities. And it's mainly rural communities and how they can become, um, more caring, compassionate, innovative, outreachy, engaged, even if it's a list that's posted in City Hall of things that need to be done. And someone's walking by and says, oh, they need the pavilion painted at the park? My men's group at church, we'll go by the paint and go do it. Tell me the paint color you want, Mayor. And they go do it, or guess what? That's no longer on the list of things, and these are small things. You may have water and sewer issues, but I threw out at the last council meeting, I said, what about your computer software, your cybersecurity? Are you up to date, your accounting software? Everything that renters are looking for right now is to be sure you have a cybersecurity policy, a supply chain plan policy, along with everything else that that is required. And I was like, I've never written a cybersecurity policy, but I can guarantee after a U S D A project, I can write a cybersecurity policy now. But they're asking for it now. Um, even, uh, I, they want everybody. If you're a nonprofit, protect yourself. Um, Ball?
I would, I would like to see, um, being a non, being a nonprofit, I know this is not a being for the nonprofit, I would like to see, um, when you have a nonprofit in the community that you see doing something, and you, you know they have a, a accountable reputation, you know? Uh, I would like to see, uh, the bond between different entities in the city, uh, support the nonprofit, because where the city don't see, where the city is not out there. We are out there. You know, we are out there, we, we see, um, and a lot of times, a lot of times, my nonprofit is, um, uh, Time Ball Ministry. And a lot of times, people see my name, and they figure that it's going to me, you know? So I thank God, um, for a lot of my sponsors that have seen the work that I do. They know that I'm in the community, they know that I'm doing what I say I'm going to do with what they give me, and they bat me. So I'm, I'm grateful for that, but it's so, being a nonprofit is already hard, because you, you... And, and I'm, I'm grateful and I'm thankful that I have a group of people that's behind me and that's with me that if we don't, if, if I don't get it from here, you know, if I don't get it from there, we get together and, and we come out. A lot of times, we come out of pockets, and we say, hey, you going to do this right here? And nine times out of ten, we execute. And, and I just would like to see, uh, some of the entities not looking at the person that you think you are supporting, but the vision that's behind the person that, you know? So I, I would like to see more of that, and I don't think it's enough of that in the community, you know? And Aliceville is a small place, so a lot of people are going to be doing a lot of things, but if you have a person that has a reputable, reputation, then, I mean, so I, I, I think that, I think that just because we see that person or, or we see that name, or we see, you know, certain things, we don't have a tendency to support it. You know, and I, I'm not to, not to toot my own horn, but, uh, God has afforded me, God has afforded me to build my own headquarters, so that we are, we are building, and, and it will be free and clear of monies. You know, so, and, and we plan to do some stuff and bring some stuff in the community out of that building, so I'm, I'm just, he's making a way. And I can't see if nobody, if, nobody, not me, not, is, is, is him, so. But that's what I would like to see more of.
And that's one of the reasons, uh, Delta Thrice is sponsoring a countywide nonprofits community organization meeting. Now that we've talked to first responders, now that we've talked to law enforcement, we're talking to our councils, the county conditions suffered through the same thing, uh, the councils are suffering through, um, education. Um, I've had a chance to talk to various members of I D Bs, and I think the one thing I haven't touched base, um, is Chamber of Commerce. So I think this is a good opportunity for me to kind of add y'all to the list. I haven't purposely left you off. Just, uh, trying to make couns, get councils and commissions to do things is, is, uh, a tough, tough job. But, uh, I think, uh, the nonprofits meeting is going to help put some perspective. And I think, um, getting that meeting off the ground, and then also working at some hard stuff with ACE will help come up with some projects that can maybe even take care of some of these things on the priority list before a priorities list is even published, okay? I told a lot of members, um, of councils and officials that I've talked to, there will be things on the priority list that get taken care of this quick, because we have some solutions, and they don't have to wait till we come to the funder's meeting and write some grants, we can get some things taken care of. But there's, there should always be for a council and a commission a priorities list, okay? Uh, Mayor Wyndham can attest to this, but most mayors I've worked with over the last thirty years in commissions, um, Paula, we want a C D D G grant, community development grant. Okay? I haven't heard you talk about any priorities, so what would you like? We don't know yet, okay? Then my deadline's in two months, so I'm not going to be able to write one in two months. And you don't know what you want to write a grant for yet, and so we don't know what the priority project is. So what a lot, and I know, I know you've heard it, when you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And, um, I plan never to fail at writing a grant and getting it awarded, okay? It's kind of my track record. I want to be sure a grant is awarded. And I do the very best I can, and, uh, most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, we get awarded grants. Um, so if you are not aware of what your priorities are, how are you going to be able to tell me what a project and a need is in your community? Um, I look at rural communities, and I can come up with things just because I know rural communities. But I don't live in Aliceville. I, I don't know Aliceville except through your eyes and your council's eyes and Mayor Wyndham's eyes, um, your I D B. Uh, I can see your staff here. I can, I'm here and see things. That's why I think the assessment that, uh, the ACE team did a year and a half ago really brought to light a number of things, um, in terms of your entire city. And, uh, I look at every rural community that West Alabama serves and think the same thing. We all need, you all need a list, you need your priorities, you need to be willing to change that list when it needs to be changed. When you approve the project, you knock it off the list and go to the next. And you can reevaluate, doesn't have to stay cemented. Can reevaluate it constantly. It doesn't, it could be the living document that it should be. Y'all have come up with some i- ideas tonight, very unique and different, that, um, I think Ryan will be able to add to the list, and we'll be able to take back to the council. We'll share the entire list that the council comes up with with the community when it's ready. Again, we still have to have conversations with nonprofits and community service agencies and a few other areas. Um, but I want, are there any other suggestions tonight?
Last comment was, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's on the sheet, because I don't have one from here now. But, uh, educational aspect of plays, plays.
Arts or anything?
Supporting the arts.
The arts.
So that type, still, I don't know, we put it on the, did we put it on, see, recreational sports?
It was, it's not.
I don't think that was on that one.
Okay. Well, okay, we're adding it to the list, Mayor. And you have a amphitheater out there that if it was improved, um, would be a good place to do outdoor stuff.
Why didn't do it there? They put a roof on it, so it's, you got to get some stuff there.
Good idea. And as you've, if any of you have watched Tuscaloosa and the saving center development, uh, arts. And as you've, if any of you have watched Tuscaloosa and the saving center development, uh, arts, a STEM, um, what are my four things, arts, all the STEM, I mean, all geared toward that whole entire brain philosophy. Let's stimulate the brain and grow the child and be innovative and raise up resilient children. I come from an arts background, uh, acting, directing, building sets, all because I loved it. And, uh, before I moved back to Tuscaloosa five years ago, did my last play and retired from it. But it's been a phenomenal thing, I still get to see my kids, so I've worked with a lot. On Facebook being, uh, graduating high school now, graduating college now, having their first big career. So it's, it's amazing what you get to see and can do and mold women that are in arts programs. And that's just the creative arts, there's all kinds of arts. Any other ideas? I want to make sure I get you out of here by seven thirty. We hear and listen to everything, so please don't hesitate. Anything online, Mayor?
Yes, that's the one I'm looking at, I got, I'm going.
Catherine, do you have anything? Well, if there are no other ideas, please remember you can always let the mayor know, uh, you can let me know, uh, you can let Jill know, you can let any of your council members know, and they'll pass it on. Um, this priorities list will, uh, be added to from what you've added tonight. ACE will spend time talking about some of the Thursday of this week. If you'd like to join our ACE team, please let the mayor or myself know. I really appreciate, um, you taking the time to come out this evening after a long day at work. And it's your time, it's very valuable, and getting some input to what is important and priority for Aliceville. This is your Aliceville. You have elected government officials to represent you, but you are also representative of this community and have a role to play. You can either choose to be part of it, or choose not to be part of it. And, um, same thing I say about voting, you can vote or not vote, but if you don't, you have no right to complain. So if you don't become part of your community in some way, some way, you have no right to complain.
Now, when I go to our church, just without care, right here, and we resolve, which is about our hospital, uh, it's the main topic of your life.
It's the only topic that night.
Now to the end, from now to the end, at our church, and now everything we're talking about, so you, guys, you can't see where I work there, because we're in a hospital, so.
You want an extra one to put somewhere?
I got a whole bunch of extras.
We had to hold some extras, Mayor. You're right.